All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of May thirteenth, 2015. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, be sure to pick up a coupon for free parking, they're usually right up there. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellphone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of the meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on items number one point one and one point two. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action in the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within fourteen days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the county board. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on April twenty-ninth, 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call the vote, please.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Harris?
Abstain.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero with one abstention.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under section three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Please note that item one point two, special permit number one five zero two five on today's consent agenda is being removed and taken up as item three point one, as there's been a request of the applicant to defer this matter for two weeks. The remaining item on the consent agenda is item one point one, pre-existing special permit thirty-two B to allow an expanded license premises for the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises for an approximate three hundred and thirty square feet expansion of an outdoor beer garden on property generally located at twenty-eight oh one Northwest Forty-Eight Street. This is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
I see none. On item one point one?
Yes.
Okay, we will add that as item three point two to the public hearing agenda. So we will skip voting on the consent agenda.
Just a moment.
Okay.
Sorry, who wants to speak?
Okay.
Okay.
We will now then have two items moved from the consent agenda, item three point one and three point two. So we will move on to having those hearings. So we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer goes off after four minutes, then you have a minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Following the regular public hearing, a special public hearing will be held on the Planning Commission review edition of the City of Lincoln's draft fiscal year 2016 through 2019 Transportation Improvement, TIP, for the Lincoln Metropolitan Planning Organization. As a reminder to the commissioners and the public, the task of the commission for the review of this report is to determine the character and degree of the conformity or nonconformity of the proposed TIP project. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, I'm going to call item one point two first, which is special permit one five zero two five to construct a broadcast tower on property generally located at thirty-eight twenty-five Wildbrier Lane. And there has been a request by the applicant on this item to defer this matter for two weeks.
Okay, do we have a motion for a deferral?
So moved. Second.
Call the vote, please.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Was there anyone wishing to speak on that item that is present today? All right. We'll move on to the next hearing item, then.
Under item three point two, it's pre-existing special permit number thirty-two B to allow an expanded license premises for the sale of alcohol consumption on the premises for an approximate three hundred and thirty square feet expansion of an outdoor beer garden on property generally located at twenty-eight oh one Northwest Forty-Eight Street. This is final action unless appealed to the City Council. Staff recommendation is conditional approval.
Good afternoon, Brian Will, Planning Department. Just for reference, using sort of the law, the smaller map down here in the corner for reference, West Adams Street, Northwest Forty-Eight Street, property we're talking about is just about a block south of Northwest Forty-eighth and West Adams, and that's the property identified here. It's this multi-tenant bay on the site. The applicant's business is located in the north end of that. Back in two thousand and five, originally, this pre-existing special permit was approved to allow the addition of an outdoor area at that time, and that's the area that's shown here, essentially dashed in. The request before you today is to expand that, and that's the, let me zoom in just a little bit, maybe it makes it easier. It just surrounds it a little bit, expands it a bit to the north and to the east, and that's to cross that cross-hatched area here, a little over three hundred square foot expansion. So as, back in two thousand and five, the planning department recommended approval of this, excuse me, we are recommending conditional approval of this today. Probably the most notable condition, I think what the applicant wants to talk about today is the continuation of the condition that this outdoor area be fenced by a seven-foot-high privacy fence. So one of the conditions is that that note be added and continued onto the site plan. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. We'll have testimony from the applicant.
Dave Orneke with Lincoln, Nebraska, with Huskerville Pub Pizza. Probably when we originally put in the application, we had intent to put a lower railing fence similar to a lot of businesses in this nature. Now, just a little bit more comfortable environment, it's no different right now, it's presently a small area with seven-foot fences and probably no different than you guys sitting on your deck at home. You just don't want a seven-foot wall to be looking at, that type of stuff. We put in the application that way, not understanding the full history of it. We actually believe that the wall was probably part of the old standard where everything had to be enclosed, and I know over the last five, ten years, that's relaxed a lot of sidewalk cafe-type things like this. And Brian noted that within this original application, about ten years ago, that the seven-foot wall was there, this is originally approved, include the requirements, beer garden be surrounded by a seven-foot tall privacy fence to screen the area. The area in question is directly west of there. It is zoned a little bit different residential, we are closer than the requirement. I guess our thoughts are two. One, the first one is really more of a feeling, general nature doesn't probably have a large bearing on the rules and regulations as you look at them, but that property isn't just an open field and it's probably not real high on a critical list of being developed in the future. If you've ever been out there, standing there, it's bad access, and the probably most undesirable part of the whole thing wouldn't be our fence, it's looking at the back of all the businesses that are there anyway. But the second thing we'd like you to consider is, you know, if the real purpose was to screen from the west, could we continue the seven-foot wall on that original west one out to ten-foot, but allow us on the north and the east sides of the beer garden to go with a lower railing fence that's going to allow visibility out towards parking lot northwest and Northwest Forty-Eight Street? And there really no reason to screen us from that direction.
Yeah, questions for the applicant?
What height are you then proposing?
It'd be a standard railing, you know, around that thirty-six to forty-inch, whatever's required. Haven't looked at it too much, but I think it's like thirty-five, thirty-six inches, similar to whatever the codes require for all the outdoor restaurants and bars for the other ones. Have the applicable exits and everything, all that's already been planned and worked out and approved, I guess. It just, the question is the height, privacy.
All right, we'll probably have some questions for Brian about the fence issue. So do you have any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. I suppose we better ask if there's other testimony in support of the application or in opposition. All right, Brian?
Excuse me.
So what's the reason for the fence?
Well, I think, yeah, I think he sort of alluded to it. Originally, I don't have a, I'd like to even zoomed out perhaps maybe a little more than this, but there is residential zoning, this, the B-three, the commercial zoning here, sorry, the B-one, commercial zoning here, does butt up to R-three residential here. At the time of the original special permit, this area that zoned R-three had the original plating dating back decades and decades, and I think we noted in the report at that time that, yeah, nothing's happened there the last forty, fifty years. Doesn't look likely anything's going to happen, you know, in the near future. Of course, as soon as we said that, then, of course, someone came in with a development plan, and a new development plan was approved for this area. And so there is the likelihood that it's going to develop residential. In fact, a couple of the units have already been built here. And so on the one hand, you know, originally, it seems like maybe the need for the screening wasn't maybe as relevant as it perhaps is today, because standing here today, I'm thinking that the likelihood of something residential to the west of this is greater than it was originally. And so I think we've probably all been to beer gardens associated with restaurants and bars around town, and, you know, the outdoor facilities, I mean, they vary, but it's not unusual that some have screening five, six, seven feet in height. And so really, the intent here was just that if, in fact, there is development occurring to the west of it, that at least in the later evening hours, that it would screen conversation, perhaps some of the noise from that outdoor area. So that's the rationale for asking that that note be carried forward and included with this amendment here today.
Is this fence, though, greater than what's required for other type beer garden areas?
Well, there's no, there's no, there's no screening requirement, there's no fencing requirement per se. There is, there is the requirement that it somehow be delineated, that you somehow separate off, and it could be perhaps just a, you know, waist-high sort of, I mean, not even a fence, some sort of railing system to delineate the area. So yes, this would be certainly above and beyond any requirement. Like I said, at the time, it was deemed to be something reasonable for commercial zoning with an outdoor component next to potential residential development.
And how about the idea of having just the side that's going to face residential have the privacy fence?
Yeah, I mean, there's probably some, I mean, there's probably some logic to that. What I would, what I would note is that the residential district boundary here makes a jog, and so that there is the potential that to the north of this, you know, maybe is a compromise that you have the seven feet along the west and the, you know, portion of the north, and it steps down somehow along the north to where, you know, then that eastern, you know, the eastern portion is open. I'm sort of thinking off the, you know, top of my head, but here again, the rationale was to sort of contain what may be happening there at hours after people have gone to bed from the residential zoning district. So certainly to the west, potentially a portion of it to the north as well.
Other questions for Brian? All right, thanks. Rebuttal from the applicant?
Oh, yeah, I guess that's something real quick, you know, not saying that the, a portion on the north wouldn't work, but I think when you look at, when you look at the area that would potentially be exposed there, it seems like, and no actual requirement, it just seems like it's a little taken it to an extreme when, if I understand, there's even supposed to be a street there, that's going to be the new access with the new construction and everything, so any residential, even if it's going to be across the street there. So, because we're losing our two accesses into there now to a street that's going to be on the north side of our parking lot.
I guess we can entertain a motion.
With the amendment that the screening should be to the west and to the north as agreed upon by the acting planning director.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I can see the arguments on both sides here. However, this is a special permit, and as a special permit, there is some latitude with regard to the requirements that can be imposed. There aren't specific requirements in the case of a beer garden, but we do have a case where we've got a commercial development adjacent to reasonably high probability of residential development to the west, and part of our job is to try and ease the transition between those two things, and that seems like a reasonable compromise.
I think I agree, agree with Michael that, you know, I think it makes sense to maintain some privacy fencing on the west and to the little bit of a jog on the north, but if we can reach a compromise so it's at least open into the parking lot, I think that would be a good compromise for everybody, so I'm going to support Michael's motion. Do we have any other discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero as amended. Next item, under public hearing, is text amendment, I'll be calling the next two items together. First item is text amendment number one five zero zero six, amending section twenty-seven point five one point zero three zero and twenty-seven point six four point zero one zero H of Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the I-three Employment Center District to allow the City Council to waive specific use regulations set forth in section twenty-seven point five one point zero three zero and repealing section twenty-seven point five one point zero three zero and twenty-seven point six four zero point zero one zero H of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. Also, use permit number one one seven E to remove the maximum floor area limitation and land use table from the use permit site plan on property generally located west of South Fourteenth Street and Garrett Lane. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval on the use permit, and staff recommendation on the text amendment is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none.
Good afternoon, Kristy Icorn, Planning Staff. I thought we would start with a little history, start at the very beginning of the I-three zoning district, and unlike most of our other zoning districts, we don't have to go back very far to, to learn that history. The I-three started back in nineteen ninety-nine, about fifteen years ago. The city was looking to develop in areas that would be known as employment centers, and the employment centers would bring in bigger businesses, office uses, light industrial uses, and it would function as an employment center. And so there was a new district developed, which was the I-three district. There had been a need, or there was a need recognized at the time, that there should be a portion of that that could contain retail and office uses. And so there were percentages that were developed as part of the I-three zoning district that would limit the amount of retail and office that would be incorporated into the I-three zoning district. And you might ask yourself, as I did, why would they need to have these percentages? Because percentages always seem to make things so much more complicated. The, the reason for the percentages was that there was a fear at the time that we were just developing another commercial retail zoning district, and we already have several other commercial retail zoning districts. And they didn't want just one big box store to come in, similar like we might see in the B-two or B-five zoning districts. And so the percentages were put in there so that as the development matured, that we could have the right mix of uses, and we could keep the intent of the I-three zoning district, which was to be an employment-centered district. When I was researching that original text amendment, there was a note in the staff report that the Planning Commission at the time had said, well, you know what, let's come back after two years or so and see if these percentages are still relevant and if they still make sense. And then the market went through, and Horizon Business Center took a little bit longer to develop than I think it originally had been anticipated, and so we never came back two years later to visit whether those percentages were still really functioning the way that they were intended to function. In your staff report, there was a table that was attached that showed the history of amendments that we have done on Horizon Business Center, and you can see that there were over twenty-seven amendments. Most of those amendments dealt with transferring square footages from different lots, calculating percentages of square footage that was leftover square footage from the original approval, and also calculating that fifteen percent increase in square footage that we can do administratively through the planning director. The majority of the Horizon Business Center, which was the original I-three use permit district that the I-three district was created for, is now mostly built out, and keeping those percentages doesn't make a lot of sense. It has become very difficult to manage, because with the original use permit, we also built-in flex uses. What is a flex use? A flex use isn't even really defined in our zoning code. So flex uses could be retail in nature, but they could also be industrial in nature, they could be a mix of retail industrial. As we've seen over the years, zoning isn't always just straightforward, and it's hard to have cut and dry uses. So the Horizon Business Center, for example, has developed, and it has developed to the intent that it was originally created for. It has a lot of manufacturing jobs, it has retail, it has office, it has light manufacturing, it has warehouse, and it has many storage. And to continue to keep those percentages at this point in time doesn't make a lot of sense. So with the use permit amendment, we would be asking to remove the land use table that specifies the exact amount of square footage that each lot is allowed, as well as the specific use type that is allowed on each one of those lots, and to allow it to develop based on all of the uses that would be allowed in the I-three zoning district. That said, is what makes me very comfortable with this text amendment, is that we aren't asking to get rid of those percentages for all I-three zoning districts. We only have three I-three zoning districts in the entire city, and one of them is Horizon Business Center. What we're asking for in the text amendment is the ability for an applicant to ask to either adjust or eliminate those percentages from their particular use permit, where you're asking that be taken to the City Council for approval, so that the community has a chance to take a look at whether or not it makes sense to eliminate those percentages on a case-by-case basis or on a use permit by use permit basis. The reason we called these two together is because they really are, do go hand in hand. We are asking, on the one hand, for the Horizon Business Center to eliminate the use, land use table, and the land area calculations table, and the minimum floor area requirements, and to just regulate that development based on floodplain, and based on setback, and based on height. We aren't proposing to change any three of those restrictions, and that the developers within this subdivision could continue to build out as long as they meet those restrictions. If they want waivers to those, then that would be something that would have to go back through the process. The other two I-three zoning districts would remain as they are today and would not be affected by this text amendment unless they two came back to this body and to City Council and asked for a waiver. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, does Horizon Business District, assuming approval from us, then have to go on to City Council?
It will have to go on to City Council.
Okay.
What are the other two I-three zones?
They are up north, and I don't know the names of those specific I-three districts.
Just curiosity question. And basically, what you're saying on the Horizon is it's matured enough at this point that it is expected to complete, completely fill out in a same and like manner as to what it's doing right now.
Sure, if we take a look at, and I know it looks like on this picture that it's not entirely built out, but I do know that they're under construction on this area here, as well as getting ready, or if they have not already constructed the, most of the buildings up in here, and the applicant can talk a little bit more about where they are in terms of the building permit process, but you can see there's not really a whole lot of land left. There's a lot of floodplain towards the western part of this property, and floodplain restrictions, which limits the buildable area. So there's not a lot of area left where you might have a big box commercial store that might need to come in and provide a lot of parking and have to have, like a Walmart, for instance, and then you would have a large area for parking related to that retail-type use. So this, this particular area sort of has, has matured enough that we trust it to continue to develop as it was intended to develop.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kristy? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. We'll move on to testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Brad Marshall with Olson Associates, six oh one P Street. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Peters Properties. Jay Peters owns two of the lots within the subdivision for Horizon Business Center. He approached us as an opportunity to see what he could do with two parcels that he purchased years ago and he's been unable to sell or develop himself. The two parcels that he has within the development are for a bank and for a fast food restaurant that are adjacent to South Fourteenth Street. He was looking for an opportunity to remarket these parcels, straight retail and or office. And as part of this, I've been working with Kristy for several years in the Horizon Business Center and I kind of knew the answer as, as it was, we were going to have to take a big step for a full amendment here to make this change. Primarily, we have been working within the guidelines of the I three district, within the percentages, within the growth parameters of the fifteen percent and the unused area that's within the development now. With all of that being said, we really couldn't get there with what Jay wanted to do for the property, which brings us to, to this point and to text amendment, revisit these percentages and a request to eliminate the table and the percentages for the property. Jay does have the intention with the removal of these to, to just market it as, as I said, as retail and office. Hopefully, well, I should say, as we've, as we've looked at this, meeting the parameters of the zoning district in itself are no problem within the setbacks. You know, no other waivers are being suggested this time for, for the property as Jay is hoping for. And as I can, I'll point out as well, I know we've suggested that a lot of the property has been built out as it has. We were part of the development and some of the administrative amendments for this particular area where we developed five parcels, four of them are built today. There's a, there's a building here, Cheer Express in the corner that's built and open. There's a building here that is, where Schwartz Paper Company is relocating their facilities. And so I have also discussed with the original developer, the ownership that remains, South Industrial, did I say that right? South Industrial LLC, such that this would affect their properties as well. Brester Construction owned four parcels that they have sold and they own their, they own their building still and talked to them as well as how this may affect them. Because there still is some unallocated square footage that the development essentially still has control of that would be associated with those parcels. And I have received positive feedback from each owner, such that this does present an opportunity for them to remarket some of these parcels that they've had some difficulty selling for, for development here.
Any questions for the applicant?
I may add, the, one of the other two I three districts is Landmark Corporate Center in North Lincoln, which is part of the area that North Star is built.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, do we have additional testimony and support or in opposition? Okay, we'll have questions for Kristy? Okay.
Could you just tell us a little bit what, if, so if this were approved, what the process would look like if somebody came forward with the, developing a new district or one that hasn't developed fully yet, then, and they asked for modifications to the percentages initially, do you then envision they would kind of stay closer to the twenty thirty then? And then as they show that they build out to the, following the intent, intent of the district, then they might be able to waive also the, the percentage altogether or?
You said that very well. That is exactly how we intended it to be, is if we were to have another application come in for a new employment center district and new I three district, that we would use those same percentages at this time to make sure that we get the employment center and not necessarily another commercial district. The, the regulations live in the zoning code and so because they're specifically in the I three chapter of the zoning code, there was no way for anybody to make any sort of adjustments. There is also some language in that section that talks about minimum design standards, if you will, minimum construction standards. And so those stay in there as well. An applicant could come forward maybe in the future and say, these design standards don't quite work, I want to propose something different. What this text amendment does is allows them to do that and come before this body and say, do you think that this works? And then go to city council for approval. But the way it's set up today is that there's no mechanism to even ask for change, even if that change could be a positive change.
Okay. Now, one more thing, this is kind of a nitpicking thing, but on page thirty-four in this staff report, about this line thirty, it says, set forth in title, title twenty-six and this title twenty-seven, should this be deleted?
Um, we can, we can check into that. Um, it seems like that was something that was added by the law department on the second round of the text amendment. But if it makes sense to everybody here for that, that language to be changed, we can certainly do that.
Just the this, that reads strange to me.
Right, right. And that's the reason it stands out in my head is it seems like it was specifically added to reference that particular chapter and not any other chapter or title. But, um...
Well, it's...
Well, but it says, set forth in title twenty-six and then, and this title twenty-seven.
Mm-hmm. If, if it doesn't make sense, then I think we should, we want to make sure that the code makes sense and if it doesn't make sense, then we should change it so it makes sense.
Okay. Any other questions for Kristy? All right, we will entertain a motion.
Do we have to call them separately?
We do.
Yes, sorry, still writing. Okay, let me call, text amendment number one five zero zero six, amending section twenty-seven point fifty-one point zero three zero and twenty-seven point sixty-four point zero one zero H of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the I three Employment Center District to allow the city council to waive specific use regulations set forth in section twenty-seven point fifty-one point zero three zero and repealing section twenty-seven point five one point zero three zero and twenty-seven point six four point, point zero one zero H of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation is for approval.
All right, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Um, I would like to remove the this, if you guys will entertain a friendly motion, amendment to the text.
Second.
Okay.
Agree.
Discussion.
Um, my initial reaction to this was, as I was reading, starting to read it, was negative because it looked like kind of a giveaway. But on hearing the arguments in favor of it, I, I see how it contributes to the flexibility that, to develop a more mature project in the I three area. And it has controls on it to keep it from violating the original intent of the text that's being removed by the amendment. And given that, I am inclined to support it.
Any other comments?
I agree with Michael on this. I, I kind of like how it was put together where an ordinance was put on the books fifteen years ago, a little over fifteen years ago, and it's had a chance to kind of percolate for a while before we've done a little change to it. But this, exactly like Michael was saying, the area's maturing and, and experience with the ordinance, this is a prudent move, movement forward.
Yeah, and I would just add that given the history of the ordinance, that there was some angst at the time about actually having these type of percentages in and the intent was to revisit it, I think it's a good action item now to clean that up and allow, under the appropriate, appropriate circumstances, modification of those percentages. So let's call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero as amended. Next item is use permit number one seventeen E to remove the maximum floor area limitation and land use table from the use permit site plan on property generally located at west of South Fourteenth Street and Garrett Lane. Staff recommendation, conditional approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Looks like a good plan for this particular area going forward, so I'm going to support the application. Let's call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, the next item is under special hearing in action. Item five point one, the, the draft of the fiscal year two thousand sixteen through two thousand nineteen transportation improvement program for the Lincoln Metropolitan Planning Organization. Staff recommendation, a finding of general conformance with the two thousand forty Metropolitan Planning Organization Long Range Transportation Plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application or this item?
I see none.
Mike Berenzo with the Lincoln Lancaster Planning Department. And what, you should each have a copy of the, this year's transportation improvement program that's been distributed. This is also located on the NPO's website or in the office if somebody would rather, like to look at it there. The transportation improvement program is to cover four years from twenty fifteen to sixteen through twenty eighteen, nineteen. The transportation improvement program is a program of projects developed by the Metropolitan Planning Organization and this is to identify transportation projects that will be supported with federal funds or require federal review or have regionally significant impacts. The, the document is fiscally constrained with federal and local funds and it is a priority set of projects that is being implemented from the Long Range Transportation Plan. The primary purpose is, of the TIP is to develop a four-year list of transportation improvements for federal funding, which will be sought, but it also is there to alert other agencies or the public on transportation improvements coming forward. The, the TIP is basically an extension of the Long Range Transportation Plan and its priority list of projects. So all major projects or, and maintenance projects are either specifically or generally implied in the, or listed in the Long Range Transportation Plan. The four-year document is developed, cooperation with all transportation agencies or agencies seeking federal funds. These include the Department of Roads, Lancaster County Engineering, City of Lincoln Public Works or City of Lincoln Startran, the Airport Authority, as well as parks and recreational programming by the Lower, Lower Platte South NRD and actually City of Hickman has a project in here as well. This has been recommended for, to the planning commission by the NPO Technical Committee for public review. And what we're looking for is the planning commission's review and performance, with a finding of conformance of the Long Range Transportation Plan. And we seek any comments that you may have on this, which actually become part of the program and is taken forward to the technical committee for their review and the policy board for their review. And those comments stay with the TIP. Open for questions before we take this forward.
Questions for Mike? All right.
Good.
Let's call for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, we were briefed on this two weeks ago in depth, so we've all had a chance to look through it. It's important to note that it's fiscally constrained and we are, to some extent, bound by the budgetary limitations of the city in considering its conformance with the comprehensive plan.
I think that was a good summary, Michael. Are we ready to go forward with the vote? Okay, let's call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
All right, at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing no one, we are adjourned.